Good evening and welcome to the October Committee of the Hall. Would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We'll start with HPU this evening, Ms. Johnson, followed by Mr. Olson with F&amp;P, and then Mr. Becker with J&amp;E. Thank you.
The Highways Properties and Utilities Committee has two items for which members of the public are registered this evening. The first we'll take up is number eighty-six, a resolution authorizing the preparation of a request for proposals, notice to contractors, and advertising for proposals for refuse and recycling services for the city of La Crosse to begin January first, 2014. Committee report is to adopt. I have here registered in favor, but only to answer questions, Gary Harder of six-fourteen Oak Court in La Crosse. Are there any questions of Mr. Harder? Seeing none, there's no need to go into public hearing. Is there any discussion on item eighty-six? I have a motion in a second to adopt. Seeing no further discussion, please vote on the board. And that carries with one dissenting vote, Mr. Paul Medinger. The next item is number ninety-three, a resolution approving final plat of Gunderson Lutheran Medical Center to the city of La Crosse. I have here registered to answer questions, and in favor of the legislation, Gary Tomcik of River Place Drive in La Crosse. Are there any questions? Seeing no need for a public hearing, is there any discussion on this item? Committee report again is to adopt. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? That carries unanimously. That's all I have.
And I believe I have four items listed for a public hearing, but I do have a question of Michael Tellier. You listed number ninety-six, but I believe you meant ninety-four. Ninety-six is dance floor at La Crosse Center. Okay. Well, hold on. We're not... What's that?
Dance floor. Those are the two issues that I wanted. That's what the...
Okay. We'll get to you then. Yep. I actually have five then. And I will take item number ninety-six first. Number ninety-six is a resolution requesting the release of funds from room tax to purchase a dance floor for the La Crosse Center. Can I get a motion for a public hearing? All in favor say aye. We are now in public hearing. Wishing to speak, Michael Tellier, one thirteen Sixteenth Street North, representing himself. And you have three minutes, sir.
Thank you. As I understand it, this room tax came into law several years ago, and it was supposed to be a temporary tax. You know, and then not that long ago, you guys voted to keep this permanent. And look at how you're going to spend the money for this tax. You're going to spend it on some dance floor. You know, is it right to tax the citizens of La Crosse to buy a dance floor? You know, just think about it, how you guys are spending our money. Is it wise? You know, we've had some major debt problems in the city here coming up. We've got, you know, the police and fire departments are always crying about they don't have enough money for things, and we're going to use money for, this tax money, to pay for a dance floor. You know, this tax should be eliminated, for one, and two, you know, I just wanted to point out, look at how you're spending the money. It's ridiculous. I think people are fed up with it. And the problem is, not enough people know how you guys are spending the money, because there's just so much you guys are doing, nobody can keep track of it all. And it's even going to be harder now that you got rid of the public hearings starting new year. It's going to be harder to find out what you guys are doing. It's going to be harder to talk to you. It's going to be harder to get the message out to the public. When I come to these hearings, I don't come to convince you, because I know you already have your mind made up.
Can we stick to the dance floor, sir?
I come, this is part of it, this is part of my point. I come to these meetings so the public can hear what I have to say, hopefully, the next day in the media, and people will find out what's going on. You know, and the fact that you guys are eliminating that is just ridiculous, and you need to reconsider.
Are there any questions of the speaker? Seeing none, can I get a motion to close public hearing? All in favor say aye. Thank you for coming. The committee? Mr. Becker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a question for the Finance Director. I guess I'm asking this question for the people in the audience here. Could you tell us who pays, where the tax comes from for the room tax?
Sure. In response to your question, Councilmember Becker, the room tax is a tax assessed on the hotel, by the hotels and motels, on the people that come, visit, stay in the city at the hotel and motel facilities in town.
So the room tax is not generated by any property tax. Am I hearing that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Sishtori from the Sixth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to ask Art Fahey if there's a possibility that you could use like the old basketball floors or anything like that for a dance floor. I'm not sure, but I mean, it's a nice floor, and it maybe could be recycled for something else.
Mr. Fahey?
The old basketball floor was traded in, so we don't have that anymore. Yeah, that was traded in on the new property that we purchased. Thank you.
From the Seventeenth, Mr. Schwartz.
Mr. Fahey could just also answer why the city is purchasing a dance floor. What does that do in terms of increasing either revenue or quality of life in the city?
Mr. Fahey?
Well, it allows us to, we find with the ballroom, we've got two different activities usually going on, on a Saturday night, that requires a dance floor. And the old dance floor, we would put on the, in the north hall or south hall, where we've got an activity going on, if it requires a dance floor, because we're doing multiple weddings now, receptions, and then definitely need one up in the ballroom area as well. So there's two activities going on for the need of a dance floor.
Use the microphone, please.
We're using tax money from people outside the city to purchase a dance floor that will create revenue for the city through the rental of our facility. That's safe for me to be thinking that way?
Yeah. I mean, some of the room tax that we've got here, you know, is, we use that, you know, for capital purchases. That was the way it was designed here for anything, we've got extra at the end of a year of any money that we've got left over as a surplus, so it doesn't go into the capital budget.
Right. Thank you.
Are there any further questions? Comments? Seeing none, the committee report was to approve. What is the pleasure? I have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none on the board? And that passes seventeen to zero. Next, we have item number seventy-nine. Seventy-nine is a resolution accepting a federal HUD EDI SP grant for the renovation and upgrade of the Cooley Region Business Center as a center for technology and manufacturing excellence and approving a services agreement with the Cooley Region Business Center. And I have one individual here wishing to speak in favor of the legislation. Can I get a motion for? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? We are now in public hearing. Mr. David Wagner, eleven hundred Kane Street. You have three minutes, sir.
Thank you. My name is Dave Wagner. I am the president of the Cooley Region Small Business Board, and I'm here tonight to speak in favor of the resolution accepting the federal HUD EDI SP grant and also entering into the business services agreement with Cooley Region Business Center. The Cooley Region Business Center is located up at eleven hundred Kane Street. We were founded in nineteen eighty-six, and our purpose is to provide facilities, resources, and coaching to small businesses that are starting up in the area, give them a place where they can come and get a head start, particularly when businesses don't have the startup money to rent a space or purchase other things that they may need. Currently, the center is serving twenty businesses, including eight in our manufacturing kitchen, and for the past two years, the board has been looking at ways that we can improve the center, upgrade the infrastructure, the technology, to provide additional services to new businesses. In addition, we want to start converting to a center for manufacturing excellence, so that we can start attracting small startup manufacturing businesses into the center. Our intent is to partner with the city to use the HUD Excellence in Manufacturing Grant to facilitate the changes that we need to make. The project will support the regional goal of expanding the manufacturing base, which is a key driver in the local economy. In addition, the project supports the regional need to increase entrepreneurism and innovation opportunities for people who are starting businesses that need advanced tools, machinery, and equipment. The plan that we have will be a two-phase plan. The first will be wiring, lighting, and technology upgrades within the center, also in addition, an expansion into our kitchen and upgrades into the manufacturing kitchen. And then the second phase will be to design and create a high-tech manufacturing lab that could be used by existing tenants or any new startup manufacturing businesses in the area. We look forward to working with the city on this project, and I'd be happy to answer any questions right now regarding the project, if you have any.
Are there any questions of the speaker? Seeing none, thank you for coming. Can I get a motion to close, please? We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion is carried. I have a motion in a second to move the committee report for approval. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion is carried. Excuse me. Next, we have item one oh-one. Resolution authorizing city officials to enter into discussions regarding partnership opportunities with Train Company regarding renovation of Plant Seven. And Mr. Becker, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Since I'm employed at the Train Company, I have asked the legal municipalities for a legal opinion whether I can or cannot vote on this issue. I have not received a legal opinion yet. Mr. Chair, when you take up this issue, I will be sitting in the audience. I would appreciate if you would instruct the city clerk to record the time I sit down in the audience and the time I come back from the audience. I would also appreciate if you would instruct the city clerk to record me as present on the issue, and if there are any amendments, I would be recorded as present. Thank you very much.
If the city clerk would do that, please? And can I get a motion for a hearing? Second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion is carried. First wishing to speak, Brad Tashney, representing Train Company. In favor of the legislation, you have three minutes, sir.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Brad Tashney. The role I have at Train is added the plant manager for La Crosse operations. And here in La Crosse, we produce large centrifugal water...
Could you speak a little more into the mic, please?
I sure can. Sorry.
Thank you.
We ship our chillers all over the world that we produce here in La Crosse, and the Train business here in La Crosse employs over about seventeen hundred people. And last week, when I was here, I was asked if I could quantify how many of our employees here in La Crosse are actually residents of the city of La Crosse. And there are, we have seven hundred and twelve of our sixteen hundred and forty employees here that are residents of the city of La Crosse. So to continue with my request, for our business here in La Crosse, competition is very intense. There are many new HVAC players competing in a challenging global economy. New product offerings, unit testing, and customer experience are becoming an even more pivotal step for customers as new large air conditioning systems are built. Train brings over twenty-five hundred customers here to La Crosse annually, and they come here to see our products and our manufacturing processes. As part of our regular processes, we're exploring opportunities to renovate our Plant Seven on Lozey Boulevard and Ward Avenue, and to make us even more competitive is the intent. To support this potential opportunity, Train is requesting that the city work with us to negotiate a possible development agreement. We need to continue as a business to improve in order to stay ahead of our competition. At the same time, Train has had Chart approaches with an offer to purchase a little over five acres of land at twenty-six oh-three Twenty-first Place South, which is directly to the west of the Chart facility. This may allow them to expand their physical building. We are also requesting the city to consider the opportunity for a partnership on an agreement to sell this property to Chart as well. And if we could, I'd like to request that we move along on that resolution as quickly as we can, and we'd sure like to see something...
You have thirty seconds, sir.
...completed by the end of this year. So with that, I appreciate your time, and I thank you for listening to me today.
Are there any questions of the speaker? Seeing none, thank you for coming. Next up, we have Bill Alexander, and he is registering in favor of legislation and here to answer any questions. Are there any questions? Seeing none. Next, we have James Hill, wishing to speak in favor, and he's from twenty-one forty-two Johnson Street in La Crosse. And you have three minutes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. I just had these quick points to make. This whole quest began in March of this year, when the then-Secretary of the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation, Paul Jaden, and the mayor, and Larry Kirsch and I, were invited to come out and hear what were the emerging thoughts and plans at that time specifically regarding Plant Seven. At the same time, Chart officials renewed their quest. They've tried before to have this purchase of the land go forward to allow or lead to the expansion of their facility, so this all, the discussion began at that time. Over the many months, it has come into clear focus now, and I just wanted to convey that the state through the WEDC is actively considering some sort of role, as they've taken in many other projects in the city over the last year and a half. So even though the leadership has changed at the state level recently with the resignation, the fact is, they are going to be an active partner in this process as well. So they take a look at these projects and at times share state tax resources directly with companies, and have so in the city of La Crosse already. So it's hard to overstate, frankly, the importance this opportunity presents. It's over a thousand existing manufacturing jobs and perhaps as many as two-hundred-and-fifty new ones, and of course, a great deal of tax base at issue. So I'm just here to urge that the resolution be passed, so that a dialogue can start in earnest to see what the outcomes might be. Thank you.
Are there any questions of the speaker? Seeing none, thank you for coming. Next, we have Joel Guberud, nineteen forty-one Nakomas Avenue, wishing to speak in favor. You have three minutes, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman, members of the committee. My name is Joel Guberud. I am the Vice President, General Manager of Chart Energy Chemicals in La Crosse. I'm here with Clay Thiel, our manager of Braze. We are just two of the many long-term employees of Chart La Crosse. Collectively, the two of us represent over fifty years' experience at Chart. We are excited to be looking at opportunity once again to expand the operation in La Crosse. Chart has a long history here, and we are proud to be a world leader in the design and manufacturing of Braze aluminum heat exchangers. We have grown to over five hundred employees, two-hundred-and-thirty-one of which live in the city of La Crosse, and all who enjoy the lifestyle that we have here in the area. I'm a lifelong resident of La Crosse and the area, and I've worked for Chart for the past thirty-two years. We have grown several times over the years, and we're at a point where we have reached the capacity of our facility. The demand for our product continues to be robust, and we're in a position to increase production, to continue to increase production to our customers. In order to effectively, cost-effectively expand the plant to meet the demands of our customers, Chart is seeking assistance and cooperation from Train and the city of La Crosse. We are seeking the necessary land and infrastructure improvements to help facilitate a one-hundred-thousand square foot expansion to the current facility, which will add a hundred-and-twenty-five new employees to the La Crosse site. The capital investment of this project is anticipated to exceed forty million dollars. Our request to the council is to explore their opportunity for a development agreement and to help facilitate this exciting expansion that we're looking at. I thank you again for your time and consideration.
Are there any questions of the speaker? Seeing none, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
And last, we have Clay Thiel, one thirty-seven Twenty-second Street South, representing Chart Industries.
I have nothing to add, Mr. Speaker.
Okay. Are there any questions of the non-speaker? Thank you. Can I get a motion to close? All in favor, say aye. Motion is carried. I have a motion in a second to move the committee report. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion is carried. Now that we're back at full strength, we have item number ninety-four, resolution directing staff to create tax incremental district number fifteen, city of La Crosse, Wisconsin. Can I get a motion for a public hearing? I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? We are now in public hearing. First wishing to speak, Greg Luce, eighteen thirty-one Nakomas Avenue. And he is registered in opposition of the legislation. You have three minutes, sir.
Well, it looks like we've opened Pandora's Box, huh? Everybody's out here rattling their tin cup. I think Thursday will be a hundred-and-twenty days since the council gave QuickTrip their handout in the form of a TIF. And earlier that same week, the mayor presented a TIF policy that the staff had been working on for years, I believe. And every council member that spoke here were in unison that we desperately needed a TIF policy, but it couldn't be, it wasn't ready to be considered right now, so we couldn't postpone the QuickTrip deal. And it's my recollection that it was referred for a hundred-and-twenty days, which would be Thursday, and we should all be interested in seeing what progress was made on that policy. But I'm afraid it's probably, there hasn't been anything done. And I think it'll be reckless, and you'll all be derelict in your duty, if you go ahead and create more TIFs without this policy in place. And TIF District fifteen, of course, we're being told time is of the essence. It's an emergency. But from what I can tell, the deal is for low-income row housing, and if you've been paying attention to the local news, we have a rising heroin and crime epidemic. This housing project is going to provide a new arena for this behavior in our northside neighborhood. And the council's reckless spending and regulatory attacks have made this city a hostile environment to run a business or raise a family. When you drive all the businessmen and taxpayers out of town, what are you going to have left? The housing projects. The current state of this council is ample proof that our founding fathers were correct about imperfectability of human nature and the corrupting nature of power in a government. So I ask you to do your jobs and finish the business of installing a responsible TIF policy. In fact, I'd like to see a policy forbidding any city staff, Mr. Kirch or Ms. Cotter, from meeting behind closed doors with any corporations that are asking for public-private partnerships or taxpayer money. So please vote no on ninety-four.
Are there any questions of the speaker? I do have a question from the first district.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My information is that there will be a TIF policy introduced this Thursday for voting on in November. So there has been progress, and I know people have been working very diligently on getting this to go forward. I have not seen it, though, I will comment. Thank you.
Well, we'll look forward to seeing it.
Are there any further questions? Thank you for coming. Next up, we have Ron Clark, two twenty-one South Third Street, La Crosse, Wisconsin, representing the Tea Party, and you have three minutes, sir.
I don't believe I'll need quite that long. I'll be brief. I'm opposed to the legislation. It's the taxpayers of La Crosse who need breaks, not these wealthy investors who close these deals behind closed doors without any accountability or public scrutiny or light on the subject. If you haven't noticed, the taxpayers of La Crosse are getting quite thoroughly sick and tired of the tax and spend, taxes rising, increased TIFs, continual corporate handouts, and now you're passing bad legislation, like for instance, your trust policy, which was designed to address the problem of students leaving town. Instead, it sweeps a general broad painbrush for all residents and causing great disruption and great hardship and great confusion. And now you're trying to remove the public's opinion from this interaction, trying to persuade your opinions, which your minds are always obviously made up anyway, so I'm not sure what hope there is for us as citizens. But I'm really disappointed to hear that we will no longer have the opportunity to face the board and to speak our mind and to be heard, and I'm really disappointed about all that I see in city government these days.
Are there any questions of the speaker? Seeing none, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Next, we have Craig Nester, fifteen twenty-five Caledonia Street, representing taxpayer, wishing to speak in opposition. You have three minutes, sir.
I've taken that off. Apparently, we have a couple more weeks to speak. Our big three minutes. The last speaker was correct. The last resolution said time is of the essence. My, isn't that an old, worn-out phrase in this council chambers for TIF and voting? Gee, I can remember a sixteen-million-dollar TIF that we voted on one night here, that we didn't have plans or contract. Now it seems we're going to be walked up to Thursday's vote with a new TIF formulation. Nobody's seen it. Richmond says she hasn't seen it. So in the interim, a horde of TIFs are running before the gate closes. Why? Because it has been talked about many times before. I even remember Seymour, Market Square. After... I even remember Seymour, Market Square. After that plane wreck, we spoke of financials. So we're looking at roughly, what, eight, ten years up to date for financials? People don't want financials. That's why they're running at it. That's why Inger Sol Rand doesn't want financials. These people don't want you to look at their financials. But we can pull the campground's financials to call them greedy instead of successful. Land somewhere, you people. I don't know where you are. I'm not crazy. These are facts. The intention of TIFs is for blighted area and people that need this money. Did we advertise this parcel, or any parcel, outside of the city for a project or for other participants? No. Is it my guess that we're gonna be spoon-faking another repetitive, repeat recipient of TIFs in this town? Yep. I'll bet you outside cash money.
You have thirty seconds.
Thank you. But most of all is our bookkeeping system in this town, that you're gonna hear a lot of till the mayoral election. The current bookkeeping system is impossible to tally any total cost for any program or project. So how in the world, how in the world do we scrutinize any project or program when you can't even tell how much it costs you?
Can you wrap it up, sir?
I sure can. Shame on all of you. Every one of you.
Are there any questions of the speaker? Seeing none, thank you for coming. Next, we have Mike Hero, thirty-two fifteen Commerce Street. Excuse me, sir. I put you ahead of one. Next, we have Carl Wigert, twenty-two twenty-one, or two twenty-one South Third Street, wishing to speak in opposition. You have three minutes, sir.
We have a gang that's taking over, and we got a Ten Commandments, and it says, "Thou shalt not steal." This tax increment financing is a way of stealing. If it was a good idea, I believe in a fair playing field, put the whole city in a TIF. But you can't do that because you wouldn't have any more money to play with. You know, we got a gang that's trying to take over a cabal almost. And you're taking away the freedom and the free enterprise system that was in this city. And, you know, when you try to pick winners and losers, unfortunately, your reputation is you're only picking losers. And, you know, some of our kids in our socialist school at Logan are striving to try to learn from you guys, you know. But it's amazing how quick we arrest those kids because you guys don't like the competition. And then you're trying to take the people's voice away from, you know. I am ashamed of my city and where you guys have gotten to because you're not, you're not as smart as the free enterprise system. Just turn the people loose, give the freedom, and quick, trying to corrupt our business people into trying to get some of their tax money back.
Are there any questions of the speaker? Seeing none, thank you for coming. Wishing to speak in favor of the legislation, Mike Hero, thirty-two fifteen Commerce Street, and you have three minutes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Mike Hero. I am area manager for Excel Energy, and I'm here today representing Lipco, which is La Crosse Industrial Park Corporation, which is owned jointly by the city, Excel Energy and Ladco. I thought I'd just go through a little summary on a little bit of the history of this parcel, known as Old Plant Six. In nineteen ninety-seven, Lipco bought Plant Six from Trane Company. We leased it to La Crosse Footwear for ten years, footwear, so they could use that as a distribution facility. Trane remained a responsible party because we had some environmental issues underneath that plant. In the year two thousand, La Crosse Footwear ceased manufacturing operations in La Crosse, thus ending the making of footwear products after nearly a hundred years. In two thousand nine, nine years later, they chose to relocate their distribution facility to Indiana, and they gave them a sweet deal in Indiana to move. In two thousand ten, Ladco obtained DNR and EPA grants to help defray the demolition of the two-hundred-and-twelve-thousand-square-foot plant. The very next year, Trane began cleanup with the bulk of the work done by the fall of two thousand eleven, monitoring possible specific points along the way. The closeout is up next. In two thousand eleven, also, we began marketing the property to a wide variety of venues throughout the Midwest. As we found going into two thousand twelve, most of the serious inquiries are retail office and residential uses for the property. As we've gone through the last few years, we've realized that two obstacles are emerging that are depressing our price offers for this property. One is the need for substantial fill and slag under the, and slag under the front of the property that disallows underground parking. And in addition, the city staff also suggested a connecting road from St. Cloud Street to St. Andrew Street as a way to accommodate designalizing one of the lighted intersections on George Street, and also to aid in stormwater flow and accommodating infrastructure. So what we are asking for tonight is the beginning and having planning staff look into the composition of a TIF that will allow us to...
You have thirty seconds.
Thank you. That will allow us to look at the infrastructure needs that I defined. Couple other quick things, too. I've been in this organization for twelve years, and some of the statements made earlier were incorrect. As far as low-income row housing, we've worked hard. What we're, the main goal here is to try to provide value to this site...
Can you wrap it up, sir?
Value to this site to spin off good tax revenue for the city of La Crosse. Thank you.
Any questions, Mrs. Richmond?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Unfortunately, I'd like to hear more from you, but looking at the resolution, I guess I'm a little bit concerned. And you say that it's a twelve-acre site. Why is it in the resolution that you only want to develop three acres? I mean, this has been going on for a long time, and we should be developing the whole site. And I see there's a picture here of somebody's plan of, looks like parks and senior living. When I looked at the resolution, it calls for row houses and some commercial. Where did this change to go to just three acres? I mean, why are we not developing this into a larger site with better opportunities for residential living?
No, our plans are to develop the whole site. The three acres possibly was some of the commercial development that we've had an interest in that are on the corner up front. But our plans are to try to develop that whole twelve acres. Not all twelve can be used for development, particularly if we put a road in and there's a small wetland area. So I can't really answer it, Andrea. I don't have the, I'd have to look at the resolution. But our plans all along have been to develop that entire site. Most of the initial interest has been along the main road there for possible commercial and, possibly commercial and residential uses.
So in that plan, which, you know, I just got a little bitty picture of, and it would have been nice, I guess, to have a larger board presented, but with the information I just received about taking away the signalization on George and St., is it St. Cloud or St. James Street, that's gonna require a lot of heavy-duty truck traffic going past that site and then the brewery that's there. I mean, I just think that that's probably not a real good design there to have that road being cut through there.
I don't know if I could defer to Mr. Kirch. I mean, this is something that is, some of the ideas have come up from the city. I'd like to see if Larry can weigh in on that or Dale.
I can ask him that after the public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
But, you know, for the design to be just thirty-six thousand square feet of senior living, is that tax-exempt property? You know, it's like, that's not what we're looking for. And then my other comment is, we have a whole lot of empty storefronts. You don't have to drive far for that. And I guess with all the different buildings here that are commercial, I'm just concerned that we're not gonna have enough living arrangements there, and we're gonna have more empty storefronts. So I don't know who's coming up with this plan, but I think it really needs to be looked at and developed more than just the three acres.
Yeah.
And if we're gonna do a TIF, which I'm not so convinced yet, but if we're gonna do that, we should be developing the whole site.
Yeah, I totally agree with you, and I can guarantee you that if we are able to get a developer agreement with a potential, potential developer, it will not be spec-type commercial property. They would have storefronts. There would be businesses in those storefronts. And we are, like I said before, we are planning and working hard to develop that whole site to return that tax base to the city of La Crosse.
Because I have been very adamant, and I've made many calls to Jim Hill, getting something going on that site. And then all of a sudden, I see this little bitty for-sale sign on the fencing, which, you know, really...
Yeah, I've seen the for-sale sign, but there's a, you have to understand, there's a lot of work going on behind the scenes. We've had developer groups from all over the Midwest coming in, and we bring them in on the same day to try to advertise that land. And it's been an effort of ours for the last few years.
Can you tell me if it's an outside developer?
We've, we've had inquiries from both outside and in-town developers for that site.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any further questions for the speaker? Seeing none, thank you for coming. Oops. Press your button. Oh, James from the seventh.
My biggest question, looking here, is the two obstacles that you list that depress the price offers, the need for substantial fill and slag under the property that disallows underground parking. It would be my assumption that the hopes of forming this TIF would include removing that slag from underneath the property to facilitate the underground parking. Things always seem to take more money when the public gets involved in doing something. I would think that there would be a real incentive to making that problem property available to a developer at a reduced price without the city having to go in and spend money to remove those obstacles that are under the grade and bring in fill. Is that something...
Unfortunately, I probably don't have the time to go through the math, but the fill issue is a fairly significant issue. The underground parking may be a little bit of a misnomer. There is, the slag referred to is some of the blacktop and parking structure that used to be there for the front of Plant Six, if you remember. They used to have an office building and then parking area. We think on some of the applications and some of the development opportunities that we have, we would have to remove that. Possibly not. But we will have to bring the fill up or add the fill mostly to come out of the floodplain. And so that's been a concern of developers on the, I'm not sure if it's a hundred-year or the five-hundred-year floodplain, is to bring that fill up. But we are trying to be cost-conscious about this and working hard to make it, to make, to make a deal. And we feel that to make a deal, we have some infrastructure needs. You know, we talked about the road, but also I think, you know, even some of the streetscaping along St. Andrew and some of those infrastructure needs to spruce up that area are needed for a, for a good sale to be made.
Okay. No more questions.
Okay. Are there any further questions?
Thank you.
Seeing none, thank you for coming. And the opposition has three minutes for rebuttal. Do you wish to speak? Okay, can I get a, Mr. Nester? Do you wish to speak?
Yeah.
You have three minutes for rebuttal.
Rush, 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 rush. Ladco has tenants under the George Street viaduct for, I would guess, twelve to fourteen years, the powder coater, for example. I think that egg is done. That's an example. Cooley Cap has homes on the south side that they're involved with for subsidized housing, and here we find out that the land is there under a trust, and the house is owned by the owner. So that means the land isn't taxed. So let's rush again. Desmond's property is tainted. And somehow, a middleman comes in, who I haven't checked out yet, buys the property. We buy the property from him, and La Crosse is sitting on a deed for tainted land. How's that going, by the way? That's super fun money. It coming our way? This is crazy. We're gonna rush this to vote again. I've just cited three things that are nonsensical, illogical, and not cost-effective. Did I say mismanaged? Why do you let these people push you? Why don't you let this sit and go? Why can't you wait until a formulated TIF recipient? Why can't you wait for financials? For goodness sakes. Chairman Cotter was on the county board that gave three-hundred-thousand dollars to Noel Jordan while the banker on the committee hollered for financials. Did I say financials? The money's gone. What's the matter with these people? I'm not crazy. Those are facts.
Well, does, you have fifty-five seconds for rebuttal. Anyone else? I forgot your name. Mr. Hero, do you want to rebut?
I'll make it.
Okay, can I get a motion to close?
Oh.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. What is the pleasure of the committee? We have a motion and a second to move the committee report. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Richmond?
Mr. Chairman, I guess we need to hear from Mr. Kirch. On the resolution, it does say a new three-acre mixed-use commercial row house development. With the diagram that you had handed out, it really depicts businesses and senior living with a park structure. I guess my concern is, what, what is the hurry for getting this approved to create the tax incremental fifteen district? Tell me what the rush is, I guess, basically.
Well, no one's adopting a TIF tonight. This is direction to the staff to go develop a plan. So it's perfectly up to the council. You can vote however you want. You can delay it. You can refer it. You can deny it. There is, there is no TIF being created tonight. You're directing staff to go do that. That won't be introduced on Thursday night or probably a month from Thursday night. So as far as I'm concerned, there's not a rush to go create the TIF. You're basically giving staff direction to go do that. When that's gonna come back, I can't say when we have time to do that. So as far as the diagram that was given, there's two items on the council agenda. One is a rezoning. Again, that diagram, as I indicated before the meeting, is illustrative of what a conceptual plan for the entire twelve acres would be. The reference in the resolution and in the staff report relates really to just Phase One. What a TIF would be created on the twelve-acre site or larger, if the council decides that. And the three-acre reference is just what is maybe known right now, which is... And the three-acre reference is just what is maybe known right now, which is that developer has an interest in three of the twelve acres. So by no means is the concept to just confine it to three acres. So, again, the rezoning, this is just shown as a concept plan. A final rezoning would have to come back. Maybe it's just for the first phase, because that's all their, the developers interested in right now.
But shouldn't we have a developer that wants to do the whole site? I mean, why are we just doing a partial? I mean, if it says, we're going to develop housing, rowhouses and so on, townhouses, why not have a developer come in and give us a proposal? We've only been asking for it for, what, twelve years, thirteen years, I guess, to get that developed somehow. But, my other question for you is, being the QuickTrip TIF is paying out so well, why can't we, I guess, extend that to that QuickTrip TIF instead of creating another TIF? Being it's, I think the state statute says it can be within that one and a half, two-mile radius? Isn't that possible or not?
Well, one of the concepts is that developments could stand on their own. This would be one that a TIF development, that this TIF in and of itself should stand on its own, as opposed to grabbing onto another TIF and have that TIF support this TIF. So, I'd have to look at whether geographically, you have to pick up all the parcels in between. So, along with what used to be Gateway, all that would have to come into this TIF. Does that make sense? I don't know. That's what I think we would be directed to look at. We can certainly look, look at that. The site has really only been marketed for the last, at least, three years. So Lipco has been actively trying to market all twelve acres. No one has come forth in three years saying, we'll buy and develop all twelve acres. That just has not happened since two thousand and seven. Has anybody, the economy has totally crashed, and no one has come forth and said, we'll develop all twelve acres. Lipco would love it. If somebody walked in the front door and said, we'll develop all twelve acres, I think we would have done that two or three years ago. That's just not happening. There's a, a developer who's interested in a retail portion, who would partner with a developer that's interested in a housing portion. And I think those two developers, if they team up, would have a successful project that would be the cornerstone to developing the balance of the property. That's just the nature of how this is probably going to be developed. In a perfect world, yes, this would all be developed three years ago, with one developer. I just, that's just not going to happen, but I think if these two developers get together, then the rest probably can happen.
And it was brought up about the designalization of the corner on George Street and St. James. What is the plan? You're...
Well, I, the city traffic engineer is not here tonight, and he's the one that's proposed that. I could defer to the, the city engineer and see if he can help weigh in on that, but I don't think either signal probably meets warrants anymore, because there's not eighteen hundred people unfortunately working at footwear anymore. So, historically, those signals were necessary when you had Gateway Foods and three or four hundred thousand square feet of warehousing space, and you had footwear with eighteen hundred employees. Now, there's not the traffic volume to warrant the two signals. So the concept, I think, is to eliminate the signal at St. James Street. You could still go north and go right on St. James, or as you, you just couldn't go left off onto Lang Drive. That's the concept. But you could still go north and east on St. James. If you're going westbound on St. James, you could still go north on Lang Drive towards George Street. There simply would not be left turns out of St. James onto Lang Drive. There would probably be a signal. Again, this is all conceptual and have to be studied, and the traffic engineer will report on that. But the idea is to put a road on the eastern side of the property, it gives an edge to the property. Another concept that we've been working with, Reinhardt Foods, Joe Ketchiver at the Pearl Street Brewery, and the Haas family, is that they have expressed interest, not in the whole twelve acres, but in bits and pieces of it. So if we did put a road on the eastern perimeter of the property, those three property owners would be benefited, because they could get additional parking for their uses. So, again, all that is in a final site plan that would come forth, but I think that it, I guess the traffic engineer would have to sit up here and defend his concept for having a street on the eastern side of the property. But I do think if that does happen, it does benefit the three adjacent property owners.
And then my last question is, has the train company done all the necessary remediation?
The site is not closed out yet. They did a remediation, and there, there may still be long-term monitoring that might take place. There might have to be additional measures taken to, if a building were to go up, at the time the building might be built, there might be additional digging, et cetera. Again, that would be probably, I think there's like a six-page memo trying to explain exactly what still might have to happen in terms of environmental remediation. But as Mr. Harrow indicated, the buildings had to be removed before the remediation activity. So there still is probably, you can't just go do a dig and then close out the site. There usually takes several years of monitoring. There may be additional site investigation, maybe additional soil remediation that might have to take place from train company. But they are the responsible party, and they have stepped up and paid for their remediation so far.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions? Seeing none, on the board, please. And that passes fourteen to three. No votes are Districts One, Two, and Seven. And that is all I have for public hearing.
Okay, welcome to the Judiciary Administration section of the Committee of the Whole. I have eight items. I believe five of them will be quick. The first one I'm going to take up is number ninety-two. Item ninety-two is the request of GCR Tire Center for a waiver of paving requirements for a property located at five hundred Third Street South, in resolution approving saying, the manager of GCR is here to answer questions if there are any. So seeing no questions from the council members, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Carried. So the recommendation on this one for Thursday night is for approval. Okay, next, I'm going to go up to the first one, which is the applica, pardon me, I stand corrected, the second one, which is the various license application pursuant to Chapter twenty of the La Crosse Municipal Code for a license period twenty-twelve through twenty-thirteen, approved subject to compliance. I have somebody here from Swoopee's here to answer questions if there are any. Seeing no council members wish to speak, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. So the recommendation for Thursday night is to approve, subject to compliance. Next I'm going to take up is number sixty-six. I have an ordinance to amend subsection fifteen point zero-two, parent B, of the Court of Ordinances of the City of La Crosse, transferring certain property from the Plan Development District dash Pacific to the Plan Development District dash Pacific, allowing for covered decks or four-season rooms to a single-family condos at forty-five hundred dash forty-five eighteen Lexington Heights Drive, recommended for adoption. And I have someone here that's in favor of legislation, but only here to answer questions. Seeing no council members, what questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. So the recommendation for Thursday night is for approval. Next is item number seventy-one. Item seventy-one is the request of the Rivley Theater Incorporated, doing business as Rivley Theater, to expand the combination Class B beer and liquor license at one seventeen Fourth Street North, in resolution approving saying. I have two people here that are willing to answer questions if there are any. I see none. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Carried. So the recommendation for Thursday night is for approval. Next one is item number sixty-eight. I have an ordinance to amend subsection twenty point two-seven, parent I, parent eight, of the Court of Ordinances of the City of La Crosse, regarding beer garden hours for Class D licenses. This was recommended for adoption by the J and A Committee with a one, with a sunset in one year. And I've got a gentleman here that's here to answer questions if there are any. And I don't see any. All in favor, say aye. Oh, go ahead, Mr. Olson. District Three, please.
District Three.
Oh, okay, will you please mark, the city clerk, please mark Mr. Olson as present?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Farmer. I appreciate those words of wisdom. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. So the recommendation for Thursday night is for approval. Okay, my first public hearing is item number sixty-three. I have an ordinance to amend subsection fifteen point zero-two, parent B, of the Court of Ordinances of the City of La Crosse, transferring certain property from the low-density multiple dwelling district to the traditional neighborhood district, allowing for commercial and residential use at four oh four, four oh eight, four ten, four twelve, and four fourteen Jackson Street, and also twelve oh nine Fourth Street South, recommended for adoption. I need a motion for a public hearing.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. So wishing to speak and favorable issue, and he's the only speaker, is Dr. David Benz, thirty-one hundred Lauderdale Court, representing Benz Chiropractic Clinic. Three minutes, sir.
Thank you, committee chairman. I'm the one that has submitted the petition to rezone these lots. My intent is to build a commercial office building on this site. A brief history of the lots, for those that may not be aware of what has transpired on these lots. They've been vacant for the last seven years. There were buildings on them, which the city condemned and tore down. Two or three years ago, La Crosse County put the lots up for bid. They did not get a single bid on the property. They went up for bid again this year. I was the only bidder for the lots. This is in a TIF district, however, I am not asking for any city assistance or any TIF financing for this. I would do the entire project myself. I did try to go through a development agreement with the city to do a combined commercial and residential project. We couldn't come to terms on that. I think we could have reached an agreement if I had more time on my end. For me, if I don't get construction started this year, the whole deal's going to fall through. So, the way the city will benefit from this is they will receive over ten thousand dollars per year in property taxes. The county will be receiving forty thousand dollars for lots. The minimum bid on them was twenty-five thousand. And the last part is, it's a first step in revitalizing this area of town. I feel like I'm taking a bit of a risk here. This is a high crime, high drug area, but I am willing to take the first step in revitalizing this area. I just need the city's assistance to rezone this to allow me to do that. Thank you.
Any questions for the speaker? And we have a question from District Thirteen, Councilmember Fran Formanik.
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to offer my assistance that is in my district, and if there's anything that I can do to help you with the progress, I'll give you my card after the session's over. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next we'll go to the council member of the eleventh district, President Cotter.
Thank you. As you know, I, we were hoping very much that there would be residential in conjunction with it, and as we spoke earlier tonight, we still haven't quite given up on it. But, are you, in addition to your chiropractic office, are you looking to do any additional commercial, such as a coffee shop or anything of that nature?
Not at this time. That was a thought early on, but right now, no. It would just be the commercial office building for the clinic.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do we have any other council members with questions? Okay, thank you for coming, doctor.
Thank you.
I need a motion to close public hearing.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, okay, opposed. Public hearing is now closed. The request is to do this on the board, and I see no further council members wishing to speak. So if you're in favor of this, vote yes. If you're not, vote no. So that passes sixteen to zero, and we have one abstaining, I believe that's District Ten. Oh, eleven. I'm, District Eleven, I apologize. Okay, I'm going to move on to number sixty-one. I have an ordinance to amend subsection eight point zero-two, parent N, of the Court of Ordinances of the City of La Crosse, regarding refuge container lids, and this was recommended for adoption, and I need a motion for a public hearing. Motion is made, second for a public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. So I have one, two, three, I have four speakers signed up, all in favor. First one I have is Steve M. Gores, nineteen-ten South Sixteenth Street, representing Citizens for Responsible Government. Mr. Gores, you have three minutes tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to ask a point of information about this previous ordinance that was out there about lids. What was the proposed fine for people who weren't able to get lids on their trash cans?
Mr. Gores, I will ask that question when the public hearing is closed.
Okay.
Okay.
I heard it was excessive, like over a hundred dollars or something in that range. I know myself that, I lived in an alley for a while, and lid containers blow around, they end up in the neighbor's yard, and we trade them back and forth, and one good gust of wind and you're missing all of them, and they don't always come back. So, I'm very much in favor of eliminating that requirement for lids at this time, and also the fact that you might be going to a more comprehensive refuse ordinance in the future with a whole different setup. So, this seems to be a short-term fix for a problem that is going to be very problematic for our citizens to deal with and get fined for. I did want to thank the council for the opportunity to speak on this ordinance tonight. It looks like we might not have that opportunity to speak before the whole council in just a few months, and I'm very, very disappointed at that fact, representing our interest group, Citizens for Responsible Government. I don't come here to hear my own voice on garbage-lid ordinances and everything else that we speak about. I'm not cynical. I come here to persuade you, if I can, about the logic and reasoning and public opinion on issues before the council. I don't think you have your minds made up, and I don't think it's reasonable for citizens. And Ralph Nader said, what are the most wonderful professions you can have in a representative democracy like ours is a professional citizen? We come here to give you our voice and our opinion, and I've seen council members pretend not to listen, but then they quote public speakers later, address their issues. So I know you're listening, and I know some of you are persuaded, and to raise a barrier of five signatures, to have the privilege of speaking to you seems excessive in my view and in our organization's view. I understand there might be a motion to reconsider that requirement, and it's going to be less efficient for you people to have to listen to all of us hounding you as you're coming into the meeting. Sign this, because I want to speak. You're going to get telephone calls, your time is going to be wasted with a requirement that's not necessary. So again, I thank the council for letting me address this issue of trash lids, and I hope to address other issues in the future when this five-signature requirement is rescinded, hopefully. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Gores? Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Lorraine Rose Decker, twenty-six, thirty-two, South Twenty-Ninth Street, representing herself, and you have three minutes.
Dear council members, I am here to support the exemption of the use of refuse lids. I find them to be more of an environmental clutter than anything. But more than anything, the lid requirement was just one more example of government trying to micromanage people's lives. He that is greatest among you, let him be as he that does serve. You are elected to serve. That means be willing to listen to your constituents and the public twenty-four-seven. For those of you who voted to abolish the HPU and the Committee of the Whole, this is the epitome... For those of you who voted to abolish the HPU and the Committee of the Whole, this is the epitome of arrogance. This is in power-mongering. This is an attack on our First Amendment rights. Please reconsider that, the, the legislation on this in the same way you have set out to rectify this refuse container lid legislation. Thank you.
Any questions for Mrs. Decker? Okay, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Next speaker wishing to speak in favor of legislation is Mike, Michael Tellier, one thirteen Sixteenth Street North, representing himself. And you have three minutes, sir.
Yes, thanks. Uh, yeah, this is, uh, this was a mistake to put this lid requirement in there. Um, I think there's probably at least half the city doesn't have a lid on their trash cans right now. And, you know, what are you gonna do, fine everybody in the city, a hundred and seventy dollars or whatever it is? It's kind of unenforceable. And, uh, I just wanna lead into, uh, something else here. You know, you've, you're, I think you're gonna be able to correct this mistake quickly. It seems you're, um, coming around on this. Uh, Thursday night, uh, someone else is gonna propose that you correct the mistake of getting rid of the public, having an opportunity to speak before you. Uh, you know, I hope you, that you will, uh, do the same thing. Reconsider and allow us to speak before you once a month. Uh, it's not too much to ask. You know, there's these other committees, but not all of you are at all the other committees. This is the only committee, Committee of the Whole. We can speak before everyone. And, you know, to try to get, require everybody, require people to have a permission slip to speak, five people. There's no way that I could get five of you to let me speak. You know, when I come here, I'm, I'm challenging you guys on what you're doing. There's no way you guys would sign, I'd get five of you to sign a slip to let me speak. You know, and it's just, it's a ridiculous requirement. It's in our constitution that we have the right to petition our government for redress of grievances, and you're taking that away by doing this. Please reconsider. Thanks.
Any questions for the speaker? Thank you for coming. And the last speaker wishing to speak in favor of the issue is Eric Radke, twenty-twenty-one, Fourteenth Street South. And you have three minutes. Do you have anything to say, sir? Nope. Any questions for the speaker? Okay, I see none. Thank you for coming. Uh, I need a motion to close the public hearing. We, we do not tolerate clapping at council meetings. I need a motion to close public hearing. All in favor say aye. Public hearing is now closed. Mr. Hexum, uh, Mr. Gores has asked a question about the fine. What is the fine?
I believe the, uh, fine for first offense of any in that ordinance is one hundred dollars plus court costs.
Okay, which probably would, would probably be close to a hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Yeah, I believe it, uh, brings it up to about one seventy-seven. That's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Hexum. Okay, uh... Okay, the motion on the floor is move the committee report. I see no speakers on the board. Okay, it passes fifteen to two. Will the city clerk read the two no votes? Two no votes are five and eight. So the recommendation for Thursday night is for approval. Okay, I have one public hearing left, and this is the very first one at the top. I have the application of Willard Large for a, a public vehicle for higher operator license. And the J, the J and A committee denied this because the applicant didn't show up. I need a motion to, uh, for a public hearing. Okay, all in favor say aye. Uh, okay, opposed? We're now in public hearing. You have three minutes, sir.
Okay, uh, I don't think I could present all of the stuff that needs to be presented in three minutes. But what I did is, I was under, under the understanding that there was only gonna be five committee people. So I did bring five copies of why I was denied, and I was denied due process through the sheriff. That is why I am here today, is because the sheriff didn't take the initiative to look over what his sergeant misconstrued and filled in the form. And I had filled the form in correctly. It says, I didn't know I was gonna have to do any reading here, but it says here, "I certify that the above information is true, correct, complete, and that falsification may result in denial." The only thing that I did wrong on this was I put on there that I had committed a misdemeanor and a felony, but I also had other charges. So what I did was I left this blank right here for them to fill in, which in the other paperwork that I got here, they did fill in, but they still denied me and filled it in themselves. Now, I never hid nothing from them, and I have proof in here that they had, uh, uh, said that I had used, uh, marijuana in the past. Now, I have paperwork in here from the Circuit Clerk's Office saying that I was never arrested on that date or charged with the use of marijuana. And there is, there is a felony gun charge in here for possession. Now, I have, uh, judge's words in here from the case of what happened with that gun. That gun was not used in any malicious, malicious, you know, I'm trying to say is, it wasn't used in any holdup. The only thing that I did with the gun was I showed a girl how to clean it. And I shouldn't have been touching the gun. And that's in here, in the paperwork, signed by a judge, stating that, that I'm no, uh, danger to the public. And I don't understand why I'm denied a job and that these documents were falsified. And I have five of them here. If I could give them to you guys for your closed whatever, or have a closed meeting on this.
Well, sir, I, I guess, first off, could you tell us why you missed the meeting last Tuesday night?
Yeah, I have, uh, my wife has a father that's dying and a mother that's dying. And I have a father in Mississippi that's dying, and I'm returning to back to Mississippi, again, the fifteenth of this month. So, yeah, I don't have a whole lot of time, and I'm sorry for missing the meeting, but things do happen.
Okay.
And I don't think that has any bearing on what this has to do. This is a public speaking, and I should...
Did you make any effort to notify?
Yes, I did, and I never had a call back from the, I think it's the, uh, Attorney's Office, City Attorney's Office. As I understand that I am the first one that's ever had to go through this process. And, and, and like I said, I shouldn't be here if, if, if the sheriff would've took the responsibility and did due process and met with me, and I could've showed him all of this paperwork that I have in here right now. And I think this is pertinent to this, to your decision.
Uh, Mr. Farmer, you have a question?
Well, I, I want to, um, first of all, in, in your mind, it may be fine to have missed on Tuesday night, but there were five of us who showed for an hour early, and we had the city attorney here and two policemen. And so a lot of us were, um, waiting around for nothing. Mr. Becker, could you move away from your mic just a little bit? I can hear your pulse. Um, the, um, and so I, we, we, life intervenes, but still, you know, that was a bad move. I, I also wanna, uh, take care of the idea that you're the first one ever to go through this. Um, I've been around a long time, and you're not the first taxi license to have gone through this. And, um, I can tell you based, and this is something you also need to know, is on previous occasions, we have been very reluctant to grant licenses to somebody who has any, anything in that guilty column there, okay? No matter what the reasons. And you, you say there's some reasons for some of them, but there are quite a few there. Um, and the police can go through better than I why they feel it's important that taxi drivers and the license procedure be basically people of clean record. Uh, but my primary reason for asking to speak is you need to know you're not the first, and probably you will not be the last.
Well, that's what I was told by their office. I'm sorry to state that.
That's, you know, we'll just let it go at that. Um, but, um, so, Mr. Chairman, you were nice to let me speak, but when he said he was the first one, I wanted to correct that, and apparently he got to that point innocently enough. Um, and then, I don't know how you wanna proceed. I've never known of us to grant a license, where there are various, um, misdemeanors or felonies and, and guilty, you know, I've never known us to. This would be a first if we were to do that. Um, and maybe I should ask a question of the city attorney. Um, is this properly before us, or should it go back to J and A?
Go ahead, Mr. Matty.
First of all, let me make clear that it's not the legal department's fault that the applicant had failed to show up at the J and A meeting. Second of all, uh, the city is also entitled to due process at the J and A committee meeting to also present evidence and sworn testimony, as well as the right to cross-examine any testimony that the applicant may put forward. So if you wish to have that process occur, you certainly could refer this and have the J and A committee hold that hearing and look at all the evidence and make its determination and come back to you tonight. I mean, uh, next, uh, month or whatever timeframe you decide to follow. Uh, however, uh, under the current process, uh, even though the applicant did not show up at J and A, did not make himself available for cross-examination and provide the testimony, as well as allow the police department to provide its testimony and evidence, he still has a right to show up here tonight and exercise his First Amendment rights under the public hearing and express what he wants to. So it is properly here before you tonight. Your question that you really have to look at is, um, do you want to deny it for his, uh, basically what's called a default judgment, not showing up to prosecute and, uh, present his evidence? Or do you want to send it back another, basically another thirty-day referral and allow that additional hearing to, to occur?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, if it would the, uh, if the, after the close of public hearing, if you recognize me, I would make a motion to refer it back to J and A because I think due process is inconvenienced it was to spend an hour here shooting the breeze with Mr. Scherf, which I enjoyed profoundly. Um, um, I do think due process both ways, uh, because I know the police have things they'd like to tell us. And, um, and I, so if you recognize me at the end of the public hearing, I, I will be making a motion to refer it back to J and A uh, for their regular meeting. And, Mr. Large, if you don't show, I'll get you.
I would just, you know, I would agree to that. I think that is fair.
Okay, yeah. Well, I'm concerned with due process and good government. Whether it's fair, we'll find out.
Now, Mr. Large, since, since we, the public hearing is still open, and I won't get this opportunity after Mr. Farmer makes his motion for a thirty-day referral. If this council tonight and Thursday recommends a thirty-day referral, we schedule these at our, the, before our regular judiciary administration meeting. Our next regular judiciary administration meeting is Tuesday, October thirtieth. And if the council orders this to be done, I'm, I'm gonna instruct the legal department and the city clerk to notice this at six forty-five. So my question for you is, can you make it?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you very much. I need a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, uh, all in favor say aye. Opposed? Carried. Mr. Farmer, you have the floor.
Mr. Chairman, you've heard my reasons. I would move referral back to J and A uh, so that the due process for both parties involved can be adhered to and honored.
Okay, could, could we also insert in there that, that, uh, this will be on Tuesday, October thirtieth at six forty-five, if that's okay?
Tuesday, October thirtieth at six forty-five, and Mr. Large will show up, as Mr. Scherf has already heard all my stories.
Okay, is there any discussion on the motion? Uh, Councilmember Johnson, the fourth district.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm actually going to speak against referral if you've reviewed the materials given to us by the police department. Uh, Mr. Large was convicted on fifteen separate counts between nineteen ninety and two thousand nine. And I'm confident that he had due process in, in reconciling those charges. So I believe this case is, is extreme enough that I'm very comfortable with turning it down without another public hearing, and I'll be voting against referral.
Okay, any further discussion from the council? Okay, I see none. The motion is for a thirty-day referral for, to send this to the J and A committee at six forty-five on Tuesday, October thirtieth. On the board, on referral. Okay, we have twelve yeses and five noes. Could the, uh, city clerk read the five noes?
Three, four, eight, sixteen, and seventeen.
Okay, now, this is a recommendation that will go to the city council on Thursday night. So this, um, this motion does not become official until the council reaffirms this on Thursday night. And I also should say if they reaffirm it, so because once in a great while the council changes their mind. So you will be notified. This vote is not filed. It's gotta be ratified Thursday night. Thank you for coming. President Cotter, can I do the speed round? Oh, okay. Uh, first, first one I have is the city attorney, uh, is number one hundred. Mr. City Attorney's asking for a thirty-day referral on number one hundred. Let me read it. It's an ordinance to amend subsection nine point three-zero parent B, parent one of the Court of Ordinances of the City of La Crosse, authorizing the towing of vehicles during the timeframe when alternate street parking is in effect. Mr. City Attorney, what's the rationale for the thirty-day referral?
I submitted a memorandum earlier asking for a thirty-day referral. We want to look at the legislation again and possibly come up with amendments to that legislation to accomplish what was being asked of it. It's not ready to go in the format that it is currently listed.
Okay, thank you. What is the council? Okay, the motion is made in second for a thirty-day referral. Any discussion? I see none. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, that's been referred. Are there any other holdouts? Okay. Item sixty-nine. I have a resolution rescinding the nineteen ninety-five resolution relating to sublease of garage located in Riverside Park and authorizing the use of the garage for storage for the City of La Crosse Park and Recreation Department. La Crosse Park and Recreation Department.
I have a question for Mr. Caroline, first of all.
Mr. Caroline, could you please step up to the mic?
Uh, Mr. Caroline, give me a little update on that, subleasing of that garage. Who are we subleasing it to and how much do they pay?
I believe they don't pay anything and there was an agreement back in the date, I think 1995, to allow Riverfest to store their stuff within that garage.
What is the stuff?
Uh, it consists of various pieces of, um, signage, uh, some supplies, some small pieces of equipment items that they use for their festival in Riverside Park.
And they're the only ones that use that?
No. Uh, the convention center, or not the convention center, but the La Crosse Visitors and, uh, Center uses that. Mr. Clements keeps, um, marketing materials in there. We've agreed to allow that to continue. I've sent him a letter and copied, uh, Councilmember Becker at his request. We've also agreed to allow Riverfest to keep the office in there so that during the Riverfest operations, they can operate out of this office space. We had no need for that particular area. Essentially, what we need is to move the, uh, storage that's currently in the basement of the golf course clubhouse. Uh, the offset would be to pay $22,000 in commercial rental space versus utilizing the building that the city already owns.
But we get nothing from, say, Riverfest to use the office. Is that just a temporary thing during the summer or?
No, they'll be able to keep that. They will pay their own utilities. They'll have to be in their name, phone service, um, those types of things. And I believe that the LACVB pays their electric bill because it's all in one bill. It's very minor. They essentially don't use that except, uh, during the period of time right before the fest and during the fest. It's kind of a staging operation for them.
Do you have a, um, insurance lease of any sort from these other entities? You know, for insurance purposes? Who covers the insurance if there's something destroyed? Is it the city or?
City-owned building and I did have the fire department inspect it to certify that the building was up to code. They found some violations. They made notification to LACVB, uh, to correct it. The garage is part of the original agreement with the city and LACVB on the old, I think it was called the Fish Hatchery Building that sits down there in the park.
I guess I'm surprised we don't lease that out for a small amount, say a hundred dollars a year like we do some of the other centers in La Crosse. You know, when we sublease, whatever. So I guess I'm surprised. But that's all I had for you. Um, Mr. Chairman, you wanted to?
Okay. Yes, I'm going to get out the chair to make an amendment. Council- Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, after the J and A meeting, I have, I found out that Mr. Caroline was, is trying to work with the La Crosse Area Visitors and Convention Bureau and I guess I, I applaud him for doing that. I also said to him, sometimes good intentions turn sour. So I asked Mr. Caroline to come up with an amendment so, so that I could have this amended tonight so that, um, we have no disagreements down the line. So anyway, this is my amendment and this, this amendment was written by Mr. Caroline and also Mr. Clements has no problem with this amendment. The amendment is that the Park and Recreation Department will continue to work with the La Crosse Area Visitors and Convention Bureau to accommodate storage of La Crosse Area Visitors and Convention Bureau materials in the garage located behind the La Crosse Area Visitors and Convention Bureau's building in the Riverside Park indefinitely.
I need a second on that. Is there a second? Okay. Motion to approve as amended. Um, all those in favor?
No.
This is on the amendment?
Yeah.
Any speakers, please? We're trying to be on the speed round. Okay. Any other discussion?
Would Mr. Becker explain what his amendment that sounded like the Declaration of Independence does? I lost it.
You, you want an explanation?
To quote the great Mr. Becker, give us the nickel version.
Okay. Basically, the, Mr. Caroline is going to try to work with Dave Clements in trying to accommodate the storage of his goodies.
What's the word indefinitely in there for?
I guess I'm going to refer to Mr. Caroline on that because he was the, uh, he wrote the amendment for me.
Change if any day you want.
For the duration of the lease.
I'm, I'm confused. How does that amendment differ from what's up there on the board?
Well, Mr. Farmer, I guess what's up there is, uh, we're, we're rescinding what, what's the present practice right now. That's what we're rescinding and, and that basically says that, um-
All right. And then your amendment says continue negotiating? We'll rescind it, but continue negotiating?
I don't think it's negotiating. Mr. Caroline is going to work with, uh, Mr. Clements at the La Crosse Area Visitors and Convention Bureau. All, all I want to, all I'm trying to do here is make sure that, uh, we don't have a misunderstanding down the line. That's all, that's my intent here.
I'm not sure what your amendment does. It sounds like Mr. Caroline's going to be working at the Convention Bureau.
Well, I think if, if, if this amendment isn't on there, uh, Mr. Caroline doesn't have to share that building with anybody.
I don't know if that bothers me or not. All right. I'm, I'm confused, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I'm not sure where we're at right now, but I have a question for the city attorney, though. Do we need any extra coverage for insurance for anyone subleasing that? Any documentation?
I don't know because it is a, um, the current status of LACVB is that of a holdover tenant in that. They do not have a current lease. They have a holdover tenancy in that building and whatever insurance requirements would be outlined in the holdover tenancy lease that they have. Now, that lease is a very old lease, uh, drafted before I was here, so I have, um, no idea what standard provisions were placed in that lease.
I'm not sure if we should even approve this this evening. I mean, there's no real issue. Mr. Caroline?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There is an issue. Um, the golf course building is going to be torn down at the end of next month. Within that building are a lot of city property that cannot be exposed to the outside elements. So the options are to put it into this building or to lease commercial space at $22,000 a year and relocate it there. The agreement that was signed was for Riverfest to be in that building was done through this council as a resolution. It's not part of the lease. It was brought before you in 1995 and out of the good gesture of the council, they agreed for that to take place. This is taking that agreement away. Uh, in terms of indefinite, I agree it's a pretty broad, uh, range of time, but since there isn't even a lease right now, we kind of left that in there. So I think to make you feel better, we take the word indefinite off, put a period there. What we're intending to do is, is I had worked with Dave Clements. He asked, can we keep our materials in there? I said, sure, I don't have a problem. I don't need that space. And then Councilmember Becker asked me to make that more formal and that's where this, um, amendment is coming from. But I do need the space and I need it very quickly because I've got to give Riverfest some ample time to get that material out of there in order to schedule the demolition of that golf course building, which is on track right now. I believe the city engineer will be going out there tomorrow to look at what can be salvaged before the contract is led on the demo. But we can't tear it down till we relocate, uh, quite a bit of valuable equipment.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember, Council President Cotter.
Thank you. Um, I don't know if Mr. Becker would be willing to, uh, as a friendly amendment, just remove the word indefinitely, but that really troubles me, um, in that, uh, we as a council, uh, cannot encumber future councils to the same degree and, um, it, it, it could become a problem down the road. It's not a clear, it's not sufficiently clear. If you don't choose to remove it, I'll make a motion to remove it.
I'll make a second amendment to, uh, remove the word.
Indefinitely.
Thank you.
Is that a second amendment or a friendly amendment?
Second.
Second amendment? Okay. There was a second on that. Okay. So we're going to vote on the second amendment to remove the wording indefinitely.
I'm not on the second amendment. I'm on the other one.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So, um, all in favor of the second amendment with removing the word indefinitely? Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Posed, motion carried. Now on the first, Councilmember Olson.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, or Vice Chair or something. Mr. Caroline, you want to keep digging a path up to the mic there? Um, I understand the difficulties we're having with, uh, storage and stuff out to the, uh, the golf course, but I just can't believe that this is cost-effective to, uh, bring equipment back and forth. Is there something that's being stored there that's not used on a regular basis or what's the situation?
Well, mo- most of the stuff that's stored out there is seasonal. For example, as we move out of our summer programs, a lot of our outdoor, um, sports equipment from Gold's and things like that, we put in there. We store a lot of balls and basketballs and soccer balls. You realize we've got a pretty large program here in addition to, uh, a lot of the, um, materials that are used for our Special Olympic programs, which when we run track and field or any of those things, we have a full setup of that. So it is, I'm sorry.
What, not to interrupt, but, well, yeah, I was. This isn't golf course equipment. It's your equipment.
No, none of this is golf course equipment. It's all park and rec equipment. None of it's golf course.
That answers my question. Thank you.
To speak on that first amendment. Okay. We had a motion on that and it was amended. Um, no further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. And then on the original, um, uh, resolution, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Anything else? Should we just? Council President Cotter.
I would like to reconsider item number 92, which, uh, that was part of the, the really quick moving that happened, um, eh, at the front part end of this section. Uh, item 92 is the request of GCR Tire Center for a waiver of paving requirements for prop- and, um, someone seconding to reconsider? Good. I don't need to speak anymore right now.
Okay. Um, all those in favor, reconsideration?
Aye.
Say aye. Posed, motion carried for reconsideration. Okay. So we are reconsidering the request of GCR Tire Center for a waiver of paving requirements for property at 503rd Street South. And what is the pleasure? Council President Cotter.
Uh, this is an issue that it, this type of issue is an ongoing one in the downtown area and, um, it, no rationale was given that I heard as to why that waiver should be given. Um, when I asked another member of J and A, they were not aware of any discussion about it the night that it came up to J and A. Um, but in any case, um, what we have here is a situation of where we have denied numerous other businesses waivers in relation to, um, the paving in the downtown area. And I think it, it at least bears a rationale, uh, for, uh, why this one, eh, why the motion was to approve it, um, at the committee level and give a, a very significant exemption from something that we've been working towards in the downtown area. So that's my rationale for, um, for reconsidering it and, um, re, um, actually, I would like to make, now, is there a motion to, um, to deny or to mo, a motion to, um, turn down the committee report? What's the correct motion there?
Well, the motion was to approve the waiver of the paving requirements.
Yeah. So I want to disapprove the waiver.
Okay. So your motion is to deny?
Uh-
The J and A report was to approve, so if Mr. Mrs. Cotter wants to do what she wants to do, she needs to vote no on the J and A report.
So we all need to vote no on the J and A report then? Oh, if, if we agree with me.
Okay. Um, Chairman, uh, Becker, would you like to add anything?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Uh, Mr. Kirsch, uh, question number one. What was the city planner's recommendation on this at the City Plan Commission?
The, uh, staff recommendation was to agree to the waiver until such time as the gravel alley behind the building is paved. Um, essentially, there's not much paved on that entire city block between Second and Third, between Cass and Cameron. Uh, the city-owned lot, which apparently we might be trying to sell, was also gravel right now. Um, this is the same treatment. Uh, there's a small alley between Third and Fourth, uh, south of King Street. We agreed to give those folks a waiver of the paving requirements behind their businesses until such time as that little dead-end alley was paved. So we thought it was consistent with our previous recommendations.
So, Mr. Kirsch, what you're telling us is we did it for one of the neighbors. We should also be consistent and do it, do it for the other neighbor. And that is, am I correct?
That's, that's what the council gets to vote on.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kirsch.
That's our staff recommendation is that we were treating this the same as we did, uh, previous folks that have been given a extension of time, if you will.
Okay. Also, um, we, we did have a gentleman in the audience who was the manager of the Tire Company and I see he's left. So I, I question, you know, this should have been done when, when, when we had the gentleman here to answer questions. I, I think this is kind of a last-minute effort to do this. I, I think that's, this sends a bad taste in the-
I, I think Mr. Becker is wrong in his interpretation as to when Mrs. Cotter has the right to bring these things up. Um, it doesn't matter that he was here or he wasn't here. She found it. She's doing her duty bringing it up and I'd let it go at that.
I will cease my conversation, Madam Vice Chair.
Okay. Thank you. Um, the Councilmember Satori.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Um, I have no problem with the council, uh, member or president of the council, um, supporting this. It's just that what, what Mr. Becker was just saying is that's what I was going to bring it up. He, we had a, we were going to have a public hearing. There was somebody here who could speak. We didn't ask any questions. The person goes home happy that they got their way and then now we're doing this. Um, but I do, I, I do support our president and so I'll back off. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, the Councilmember Sequist.
I, I just have an additional question. It seem, uh, are we not improving the city's lot on the other, like the southeast corner of that block by seeding it and, and taking care of it already?
Yeah. The inspection department went after the city because the city lot was gravel, so that gravel's been removed. It's been seeded down.
But we, we still have gravel and elsewhere on that block?
In that block, the, uh, one of the areas, some of this area had been used temporary parking during the construction of Riverside Center Phase 3. So the city parking lot was created, if you will. Um, and the land owned by the Derrmans, that's currently gravel. Uh, the other one, there had been, uh, in the aerial photo that's in the planning staff report, you, you see parking on land that is owned by First Supply Group. So that whole area was converted to gravel parking during construction of the new city ramp, et cetera, et cetera.
What, how long is this going to go on, Larry, with, uh, do we have plans? So, I mean, is this going to be kind of Steve Caroline indefinite or are we, um, I mean-
There's nothing in the capital budget for 2013 to pave this alley. Uh, the property is owned commercial. I think the city can, uh, under commercially zoned properties, uh, pave the alley and, and assess the property. property. That's what we've done in other parts. So a council member usually of the area would submit an alley paving request. Because of the zoning, you don't need 51% or anything else. So again, we just thought we'd be consistent in staff recommendation. It's a gravel alley. So again.
I apologize for not being able to attend the plan commission, but how much of this, of the tire place is not paved?
It's just behind the building, adjacent to the alley.
Okay. Thank you.
Council President Cotter.
Given the explanations that have been given, I understand now what the situation is in relation to it, and as long as it is only for the, the duration of the alley being unpaved, I can see that there is a rationale then for allowing the exemption. So I, at this stage, move approval of the committee report.
Second.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Need a motion to approve the balance?
Ooh.
And we are, motion to approve the balance. All in favor, say aye. Motion carried. We are, we need an adjournment. Yeah. Oh, I thought we were, according to Council Becker, council, council member.
He said adjourn.
Are there any other holdouts on the HPU agenda? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to approve the balance. Have a motion and a second to approve the balance. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. And, I know, right? I should be able to speak for this committee.
You can try and shut me up by getting out of here early, but it's not going to work. Are there any holdouts? Seeing none, can I get approval for the balance?
Ooh.
We got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.